Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council this Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Scazzola. Councilmember Furtado.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Present.
Mayor Bybee.
Present. And I'd like to invite my husband, Kelly Bybee, to lead the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. So if everyone in the audience could please stand.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You may be seated.
Thank you. So tonight, we have no special presentations or proclamations and no communications and petitions. This brings us to oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on any item, excuse me, not on tonight's agenda? And I see Ken Johnson coming to the podium.
Madam Mayor, Member of City Council, Ken Johnson. Tonight, I'm the Executive Director of the Campbell Chamber Community Foundation. And I want to just give you a quick report on the thirty-ninth Annual Campbell Community Toy Program. We handed out toys to over nine-hundred-and-fifty children last Saturday, over six-hundred-and-fifty families. And without the support of the city, the police department, Santa Clara County Fire, the home church, DCBA, and the chair members, and all of you who participated in our fundraising events, too. A special thank you. We all able to, also today, we gave over five-hundred toys to the sheriff's department for their Santa Paws program. So we'll support Valley Children's Hospital as well through our program. So thank you for your support. Just was another successful year. We'll collect toys through the end of the year. That'll go in inventory for next year's toy program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any other oral requests? And I don't see anyone online. So I'll move on to council announcements. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for the Civic Improvement Commission. To find out more about this committee or to apply, please contact the city clerk's office at four oh eight eight six six two one one seven or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. Visit the Ainsley House this holiday season. There will be a second open house event on Thursday, December twenty-first, from five-thirty PM to eight PM. For additional information, please visit campbellmuseums.com. The Campbell Community Toy Program is in need of toys, books, soccer balls, and games. Toy collection bins have been placed at various locations, including Campbell City Hall, Police Department, Community Center, and the fire stations located on Union and Sunny Oaks. For additional information about this program, please visit campbelltoyprogram.com. And as Ken just mentioned, they are still accepting donations, so it's not too late if you want to donate. The city of Campbell is committed to supporting its citizens by strengthening its neighborhoods. The city offers grant funding to help neighborhoods build a sense of community through its Neighborhood Association Assistance Grant Program. Applications to apply will open January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Neighborhood associations within the city of Campbell are encouraged to apply. For more information, please visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. 'Tis the season for potential thefts and holiday crimes. Please do not leave packages or valuables on the seat of your car. Always lock it in the trunk. Keep all car doors locked and windows closed, and set your alarm. If shopping at night, remember to park in a well-lit area. Please be sure to report suspicious activity to the Campbell Police Department at four oh eight eight six six two one oh one, or if you encounter an emergency, please call nine one one. City offices will be closed for business beginning noon on Friday, December twenty-second, through Monday, January first. Police and emergency services will remain open. And I also want to mention that our next council meeting will be held on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. The first meeting in January has been canceled. So now we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. And I want to point out that there are three desk items tonight on items two, one, one, I'm sorry, two desk items on items one and four. Are there any council members, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? And anyone online? I don't see. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move the approval of the consent calendar items one through nine with the incorporation of the two desk items that you mentioned, both of which are updates to minutes of meetings.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by councilmember Furtado and a second by Vice Mayor Landry to approve the consent calendar, including the two desk items. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazzola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee.
Hi. Tonight, we have no public hearings or introduction of ordinances. It takes us then to council committee reports. Item number ten, approve appointments to the Historic Preservation Board. And I'll defer to our advisory commissioner subcommittee to report on their interviews.
Thank you, Mayor Bybee. The Appointment and Interview Subcommittee of the Council, which consists, as you know, of Vice Mayor Landry and myself, considered the nomination of two candidates for the Historic Preservation Board. We have two seats available. And so it is our recommendation to the city council that Todd Walter be reappointed, he's currently been serving as chair, to a four-year term on the Historic Preservation Board. And Bill Zhang, who also has an interest in history and wants to make a further contribution to the city, we request or we nominate Bill Zhang for Historic Preservation for the short term.
Thank you for that update. Are there any questions? And could we, I don't, go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, just a brief question, just to be sure I understand, is Bill new to the commission? This would be his first term.
Sorry, did you say, is he new?
Yeah.
Yes, he's new to the commission. Yes, he lives, of course, in Campbell, and he indicated his interest in history, both in historic preservation and the efforts of the Historic Preservation Board in other areas such as designating historic homes and buildings and things of that nature. So we're very confident that he did a good job.
Great. Glad to hear we had his application.
Thank you. I'll go to the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? If not, I will bring it back to council for a recommendation or motion.
I move that the city council approve the appointment of Todd Walter and Bill Zhang to the Historic Preservation Board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by councilmember Furtado, second by Vice Mayor Landry to appoint Todd Walter and Phil Tang, to the Historic Preservation Board. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazzola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee.
Hi. Thank you. That passes. So the next item is on the agenda tonight is our new business item, the city council reorganization. And I'm not sure if anyone in the audience wishes to speak at this point, but we will have an opportunity for public comment after the reorganization. So with that, I will defer to Vice Mayor Landry.
Thank you for this last year of leading the city. That's amazing what you were able to get accomplished with our support. The general plan, the housing element, the design standards, we broke ground on the library, we, the police went out to bid. To me, it's been a very successful year, and it was under your leadership. So I wanted to recognize and give you this plaque with the gavel on here and a seal presented to Ann Bybee on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in recognition as services mayor from the council and staff. Thank you very much.
Very meaningful, and I appreciate it very much. And so with that, I do have comments I'd like to, I'd like to share. So as I reflected on my years mayor, what comes to mind are the comments I made a year ago when I was selected mayor. At that time, I spoke about the various projects that were underway, what I envisioned could be achieved in two thousand and twenty-three, and the importance of teamwork in accomplishing those goals. At the State of the City in September, I highlighted many of the milestones that occurred in two thousand and twenty-three, including completion of the general plan, approval of the housing element, adoption of the zoning ordinance, and development of residential design standards. I discussed our fiscal outlook and the budget process this year, then emphasized priority-based budgeting intended to link city resources with the strategic priorities of both the city council and the community. In addition, many other projects are currently underway, consistent with those priorities, including development of a climate action plan, an update to the city's economic development plan, filling key positions to support our affordable housing initiatives, and increasing technology to support public safety needs, just to mention a few. After much anticipation, I am excited to report that progress has begun on the Measure O projects. Groundbreaking for the library occurred in November, and the bid for the police facility was awarded in November with groundbreaking to follow in January two thousand and twenty-four. While many accomplishments were achieved this year during my leadership, success is not determined by one person, but by a team. Vince Lombardi defined teamwork as, and I quote, "an individual commitment to group effort." That is what makes a teamwork, a company work, a society work, civilization work, end quote. I am extremely proud of the many accomplishments achieved this year through the individual and collective leadership of the city council and executive team, working in collaboration with city staff, community partners, and residents. Although it may sound cliche, I liken our success to a team that is well-coached with an effective captain at the helm. It is easier, easy to score points when the group is goal-oriented and moves forward with positivity, enthusiasm, and purpose. As a city, we have certainly scored many points this year, so let's give ourselves a hand. Next, I would like to give credit where credit is due, beginning with the city council. I want to acknowledge my colleagues for their vision and commitment to the city. Although we each have our different strengths and styles, we have worked well together in deliberating and reaching consensus on issues that have resulted in the best outcome for Campbell. I appreciate the open dialogue and respect that has occurred when differences of opinion have been voiced. Next is our executive team, led by city manager Brian Leventhal. Thanks to the leadership of our individual executive team members, Bill Seligman, city attorney, Andrea Sanders, city clerk, Angelique Ada, assistant city manager, Jenny Lee Christensen, HR manager, Ryan Favilla, acting IT manager, Rob Eastwood, community development director, Will Fuentes, finance director, Todd Capurso, public works director, Gary Berg, police chief, and Natasha Bissell, recreation and community services director. Let's give them a round of applause as well. I also want to thank Diana Johnson, executive assistant to the manager and council, for the support she provides to the mayor and council. And likewise, I extend my appreciation to the city clerk staff, Kristen and Monica, for your work behind the scenes to support the mayor and council. Finally, I want to acknowledge our incredible city employees whose dedication and commitment made Campbell the best city in which to live, work, and play. On a final personal note, thanks to my husband Kelly, who has been my escort, my driver, and all-around perfect first gentleman. And I also want to thank the members of my family that are here, Jenny, Ben, and Miranda, and also acknowledge my, my family that isn't here, Kyle, Leanne, Eli, and Liam. It has indeed been an honor and privilege to serve as mayor this year. Thanks to my colleagues for selecting me and for your support throughout the year. It has been a rewarding experience, one that I am extremely grateful for and will remember with great appreciation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Yeah, I get to say thank you again. It's been great having you be mayor and being your vice mayor. When you first got elected and we went out to lunch and I went home, I said to myself, she has so much poise and grace. And you carried that through this whole past year. I think it's been a wonderful opportunity, and I do look forward to continuing our next year together.
Thank you, Susan. Councilmember Furtado?
Yes, I'd like, vice, would like to add my thanks and congratulations on your successful years, mayor. I know you've served the city for many years, several years as the city clerk. And then when you retired from that position and after a pause, ran for council. And this has been a very busy year, challenging year, as you mentioned yourself. And I want to thank you very much for steering us through all of the issues that we dealt with. And it's, you know, we can all be pleased, the staff, council, everyone, that we have successfully concluded the year under your leadership and completed a number of projects. Thank you. Look forward to your continued service in the council.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, thank you, Ann. When, when I think about the past year, the phrase that comes to mind is a steady hand. And we've all benefited. I know staff has, I know the community has, from the experience, the poise, everything that people have, have talked about, and during times that are so tumultuous and we're dealing with issues and a lot of uncertainty, has been really refreshing to have that steady hand. And so really want to say thank you for, for your service. I know it's not easy, and really looking forward to keep working.
Great. Thank you, Sergio.
And I just, yeah, I just want to say, you know, this is my first year in this whole game here. But I gotta say, it's been amazing. You're my first mayor, you know, and everything that got accomplished this year, it's mind-blowing to me. It was really just, I mean, you, you listed all the accomplishments, and it's, it's truly something to be remembered. And so I'm glad that you're still on the council with us, and I'm looking forward to the next year and, and years going forward. And hopefully, we can keep this momentum going because it's been just an amazing year. And all due credit to your leadership.
Thank you very much. And I'll, and I'll open it to the public if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak. I will then entertain a motion for the nomination of mayor.
I'd like to make a motion for the nomination of Vice Mayor Susan Landry to the position of mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by councilmembers Scazzola, second by councilmember Lopez to nominate Vice Mayor Landry to the position of mayor for two thousand and twenty-four. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazzola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Is it too late to say no? Just kidding, guys. Thank you. Yes.
Mayor Bybee.
Hi.
Thank you very much. I don't really have any pre-planned pages of text like the mayor did, but I would like to thank my family and friends that are here. Start over here. First, we have Linda Hilton, who we've been friends for over twenty years. We've worked together at Santa Clara University. Next is my sister-in-law, Michelle. We met when we were nineteen years old. I fixed her up with my brother. I liked her so much, and she's still in the family. And my friend, dear friend Barbara, who was so polite and nice to bring me my beautiful flowers that I'm wearing tonight. And she's been an avid supporter, has helped me basically get elected and re-elected, and is a dear friend. And then also, one of my other good friends is Josh. He's sitting in the back over there, kind of trying to hide a little bit. I want to thank you for being here. And I also have other supporters of mine and friends. I have Jim Moffett, Barry, and Susan. They were very helpful, not only during my campaign, but have been supporting me for all the years as I've been on council. So I just want to thank everybody. It's, I'm looking forward to this year, which will be my last year. So here we go. Let's move forward. So I will now open it up to nominations for vice mayor.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilmember Sergio Lopez to the position of vice mayor for year two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at Ann. Okay, I'm getting the hang of this here. All right. We have a motion and a second. A roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmembers Scazzola.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Mayor Landry.
Hi.
All right, that motion passes. And with our new vice mayor, like to make any comments?
Sure. And, and I'll, I'll keep it brief. I, first off, I just want to say thank you to my family for being here. Everything I do and have done and am able to is because of them, and never forget that. And Susan, I just want to say, I think we're going to make a great team this year. Really looking forward to it.
Looking forward to it, too. All right. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak or come on up? I don't know if we have any cards. Is there anybody online? Would anybody in the audience like to come up and speak? I don't see anybody jumping out of their chairs. So I think at this point, we're done. Our meeting's over. Is that correct? No more new business? All right. Thank you.
Just want to congratulate both Mayor Landry and Vice Mayor Lopez. I'm looking forward to working with you, and I feel the positive energy moving forward. And we have just as much to accomplish in two thousand and twenty-four than we did in two thousand and twenty-three. So congratulations.
Thank you. All right. First gavel action. The meeting's over. Thank you. All right, first scabble action. The meeting's over. Thank you. All right, first scabble action. The meeting's over. Thank you. All right, first capital action. The meeting's over.